Period, so in the workshop discussion, so we do not have any updates on the big house either.
Do we have an update?
Do we have?
What I am working on is the bid advertisement, but in looking back through the scope of work that NBI had had laid out versus what we had talked about, I would like to go back down there and revisit, um, especially the interior framing portion. What I don't want to do is for us to go too far on doing the masonry repair without bracing it properly once we get the masonry repaired, so I would like to revisit. My plan is to have the, the brick and the framing and just bracing in when we send this information out, so we can get that coordination between those three. Um, and what I would like to do is put it out to bid mid-October and then have a two to three week. So by the end of October, have some numbers to do masonry, framing and, and bracing is what I'd like to do. And I think that would take us much further down, down the road than just doing the masonry. And I think we had talked about that a, a little bit, but I hadn't, I hadn't looked when we discussed, so I just wanted to bring that back to you guys, um, so.
Sounds good.
Probably, probably just advertise for bid, uh, is it Wednesday when things need to be in?
Um, I mean, if we're advertising a buzz, it doesn't matter, but now they only publish the Advocate on Wednesday, so I'll have to have it by Monday at noon to them.
Okay, alright. So we'll get it in sometime, uh, mid-October, but that's what I'm, I'm working on right now.
Thanks, Sam.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Studs asked for updates on SHS and TMG for the agenda. John is on the school board, so I'll ask him to provide an update at this time, John.
Alright, so, um, basically, we met with, uh, we being the city, uh, school board. We had a lunch, a lunch with our attorney, it wasn't a formal meeting, but we didn't, um, ask for his legal advice about next steps, because at this point, there's just been a lot of discussion, informal discussion about could the city school system take the high school? Would the county want us to take the high school? What would that mean? What would it look like? What would it cost? So there's been a lot of talk around town, a lot of buzz about it, but there's not been any formal discussions other than we had attended a workshop, a joint workshop with the county school system about, well, I mean, months ago now, and agreed to split the cost of an appraisal, um, just to kind of see where things stood, get a value on, on the property, which we did, they got an appraisal, formal appraisal, submitted that to us and the county to look at. It's not really gone anywhere since then, um, so.
What, what was that appraisal?
I don't know an exact amount.
Twenty-eight million or so?
I think it was six million, maybe six point one, six, don't quote me on that, but it was in the six million range, uh, I don't know what exactly, I think it was six point something. Now Rodney was with the appraiser and so was the county's maintenance superintendent, so I don't know how much of that. I'm assuming the appraisal included everything, structures, building, ball fields, land value, all of that. And then, you know, you start deducting from there or adding to from there, so I, I've not seen the appraisal myself, but I think six million and change. So we went to Chuck and just said, hey, you know, what's next? We don't know where to go from here legally, we need guidance. And so he agreed to come and have lunch with us and just talk to us and see what we wanted to do. So he did, and then basically what he said was, you know, we need to make sure that we do this by the book and above board, so that, you know, that anything was done without public knowledge, and we all agreed to that, absolutely, we'll do this the right way. So what he said was, what we need to do is we have to authorize an executive committee to begin formal talks with the county school board, and they need to do the same. They need to authorize an executive committee to enter into formal dis, enter into formal discussions with the city board, so that's where we're at. At our next board, board meeting, someone will have to make a motion to authorize an executive committee to sit down and begin talks with the county, and they'll have to do the same. Once we do that, we can sit down and start talking about, okay, let's look at this appraisal and let's look at what it cost, what's the maintenance of effort values, all of those, what's it gonna cost us? What will it cost us to fund this school annually from our funding body? What's the amount? So we can't really know those amounts until we authorize those committees to get together and look at it to defend the paper, because otherwise it's just speculation. I've heard it's gonna be this millions of dollars, it's gonna double our taxes, not, nobody knows any of that stuff. Those are just unfounded remarks until we actually get those numbers in front of people and print the numbers. So that's kind of where we're at. We don't really know what number yet, we do have an appraised value of the school and the property, but we don't have any kind of negotiations.
John, has it, um, sorry, sorry to jump in, has any discussion, alright, I think I know the answer, but just putting it out there, has there been any discussion on, we have X number of schools in the county? We have a budget from the county. What amount of the budget funds goes toward Sweetwater High School? Has, has anybody asked that particular question? Because, I mean, that would, for me, that would be at least a beginning point of.
We've asked that question, we've asked it a couple of times, still haven't got any numbers. So again, once we formally authorize those committees to sit down, then we can do that. And, and that was our question to Chuck, like, we just want a number to start with, like, what's it gonna cost us to finish up all that, it's a phone call, he said, I can, you guys agree to this, I can make phone calls, we can get all that information pretty quickly. So there, the Monroe County School Board Attorney and our city school board attorney, they're in the same firm, which is a plus, because the conversation and the communication between them is very, very simple, they're in the same firm. So again, we don't have a number yet, what it costs to operate that school, it would be a guess. I just, simple math for me, the city funds, the city of Sweetwater funds six hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year making some effort for the city schools, what you guys give currently to the city schools, for about fourteen hundred and fifty students. So you break that down to a per student number, this is what we pay per student. It's short of five hundred dollars per student, and so in my mind, I thought, okay, well, high school, let's just say there's six hundred students there roughly, and if that comes in under, you know, right at or under five hundred students, then it's putting in about a three hundred thousand dollar maintenance effort for the high school. Now, that may be nowhere close, that's just my Sweetwater math, hey, per student ratios. Now, it may be completely different when we get the numbers from the county. I don't know what the county pays in the maintenance effort directly to Sweetwater High School. So that's the number we're waiting to get back.
I mean, typically, money follows that student as, as well, so.
You're asking about operational budget.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Well, and the county has told us that the operational budget for the high school covers what the high school is. So the revenue they get from the state and federal formula covers the actual operating cost every year of Sweetwater High School. So that money would then go to the city school system and the operational costs would be covered. Still, that's not official until these executive committees, we have asked, and the finance people have told us that much, that the operational cost is covered by what the state funded them.
John, let me ask you a question. Are you through, Sam?
No, I'm never through, but go ahead.
Are you?
No, no, go ahead.
I've had several people, what is the purpose behind this? What is the reasoning that Sweetwater School Board? And number two, the question is, on something this big that affects really the first district? A lot of first district kids go to Sweetwater High School, that should not this be put on a referendum?
Well, my opinion is, I guess to answer your first question, why, what's driving it? As long as I've been on the school board, going on ten years now, that's the question that I've been asked most consistently, is how come Sweetwater High School is a county school, and Sweetwater City School is our city school? Why is that? And I don't have a good answer for it, I just say, I don't know. It's always been that way, ever since I've been around, it's always been that way. And then the follow-up to that is, what do we gotta do to get that to be a city school? I'm not happy with the way Sweetwater High School is, I'm not happy it's a county school, I'm not happy with the bus system. And my answer is always, well, I don't know. And after eight years of that, I got tired of saying, I don't know, and people asking that, if he hasn't elected a fisherman, and I just tell them, I don't know. And I said, well, I'll tell you what, I can start asking some questions, and so I did. And the more I asked, the more people said, yeah, I want this to be a city. So basically, that's kind of what's behind it, is what I told them at the joint workshop was, the better question of why, to me, is why not? Why not a city school? If all the other schools are city schools, why in the world is a high school a county school? Why not have it in the city school system? I feel like our city school system is a very good system, but I feel like when they transition from Sweetwater City Schools to the high schools, we lose that consistency. And you hear that from our teachers, once they finish here in eighth grade and go from middle school to the high school, we feel like we've lost our kids, because there's no consistency and there's no power there. So for me, if we're really wanting to do what's best for the kids and give them the best opportunities, it just provides consistency, like, we start them out at pre-take and we follow them all the way through graduation. Now, on the numbers, from a numbers perspective, it helps the city school system tremendously by taking a high school, because the funding formula and TISA and all that money that we get, state, federal money, there's all kinds of things that go into that formula, calculate how much money you get per student. And one of the biggest things that we don't get right now is graduation rate. If we had graduation rate money and those scores to improve us, so basically, they rate you from one to five on a level, one being the worst, five being the best. And so we recently had level five schools in the city school system. So we shot up there, that gets you more money from the state and the federal government. The higher level you are, the more money they give you. So we're up to level five now in some of our city schools. Some of them are three, we got maybe one or four, but overall, we jumped up to a five. Factored into that is graduation rate, all these other things that we can offer CTE courses into high schools. So if we get that high school, not only do we get those students and get to follow them consistently, but we get more money from the state and federal government, because our level goes up. You know, how, you know, our levels, like, that graduation rate factors into this formula. So to me, it makes sense to the community, this is just my own personal opinion, I don't think Monroe County, I don't think Sweetwater High School is, is a very high priority when you've got twelve other schools in the county to look after.
Oh, they wanna get rid of it.
Well, yeah, well, I don't know if they do or not, but I'm just saying, they've got twelve other schools between Tellico, Bonneville, Madisonville, Coker Creek, Bullbator, all of, they got twelve they gotta worry about. And you got one in Sweetwater. And to me, that one is kind of lower on the totem pole as far as who gets the most attention. And I feel like we're doing our students a disservice.
Do you really believe that if we take the Sweetwater High School into the Sweetwater school system, that it's not gonna raise city taxes?
I don't know if it will or not, I don't know that until we get those numbers back. I feel like if it did raise taxes, and I'm a taxpayer too, listen, you go, if, if what people say is double our taxes approved, then my vote will be no, absolutely no. I don't want my taxes to double just to obtain Sweetwater High School. But if we get a number back and they say, okay, it's gonna raise your taxes a little bit, then to me, my answer is absolutely, because I'm funding it now. I got my name on a document down there at the bank to get a loan to do some improvements out there at that school. I'm funding it now, you're funding it now, everybody in Sweetwater's funding it right now. It don't matter, it, it's not your tax money, but it's the money coming out of your wallet. It's your private dollars that are funding the Sweetwater High School right now. Any improvement that you go and see out there right now is private money.
Well, that comes, what, thirty percent we pay, we give the, what, what does it, we give?
We give them around six hundred and eighty thousand. Our maintenance of effort is not the bare minimum, we don't just give the minimum either. So what, what would be required to take the high school, maybe even less than whatever the calculation is, because we're already probably given a little bit more than what the bare minimum is required? So again, we've got to get those numbers before we can make any kind of decision.
I think we'll continue to fund the high school, whether it's a city school or a county school, it's just if we get it to the city school system, then we know where the money's going and it's being funded properly. If it's not a city school system, then it's getting funded, it's getting funded through guys out there that work on it, whether your kid's playing ball out there, or you're a business donating money to the, to the, whatever booster club you donate money to, it's coming out of your pocket, whether it's tax money or your private dollar.
My second question was, and I've had, I've had some calls on this and I've had some comments. Do you not, do you think before this would be passed, that it should be a referendum on whether we take Sweetwater into the city school system? A referendum, yeah, which means they actually, people would vote on it? Yeah.
Well, my opinion to that is, first of all, I would have to get our attorney's advice. I want legal advice on that, because if, if it requires a vote for a referendum, which I don't believe it does, but if it did require a referendum, then certainly I would, I would be for that. I wouldn't be opposed to a referendum, but I wouldn't necessarily be for one either. Now, if it involved a tax increase, especially a significant tax increase, then I would say yes. I would like to see a referendum to, to, to know, is this worth it to you? Would you be willing to pay a tax increase to get the high school? And if the overwhelming authority said no, then, then you don't do it.
Okay, so you're gonna bring the numbers back to us, uh, maybe, the more you find out, you'll.
Yes, yes, we meet with our, I guess, school board meets in October, their school board will meet in October. At that point, we have to authorize the executive committees, authorize them to meet and discuss it formally. But any information that we get on it, that, that's open record or that's shareable, I will certainly share it with you guys, because at the end of the day, if this is going to happen, as the funding body for Sweetwater City Schools, they would have to meet approval, because, and that's what Chuck said, our attorney, he said, look, you know, next step is, we formal, formalize discussions on it, we sit down with the county and talk about this, is this something we're gonna do? Let's get the financials later, and then at that point, it goes to the funding body. And if they say, no, we don't wanna do this, then it's, it's then anyway.
Uh, let, let me address the board with this, um, Lamar's not gonna be with us for a while. Maybe the last first year, we need a representative on the school board to sit in. Joanne, would you be willing to fill in for Lamar until he, till further notice or till he's able to start going back to keep us informed and keep us abreast?
When do you meet?
We meet the second Monday of each month at six o'clock.
I have a Sam's Board meeting the second Monday of every month at five, so if, as long as I could be a little bit, where do you meet?
At the central office, right there beside the high school, that brick building right there where the little baseball field is at the Junior High.
Okay.
At their entrance to the high school.
If I can be a little bit late, that Sam's Board meeting, does it usually go much longer than an hour, hour and a half?
Sam?
Yeah, Sweetwater Area Ministries.
I don't know how long they go.
No.
She's asking.
I'm on Sam's Board meeting the second Monday.
What, what time does your meeting start?
Six.
Do they video those meetings?
We do, well, we did last year, we did through COVID, I don't know if they're, I don't know if we're doing them live now. We did through COVID and they've been up to last year. But six o'clock is when the meeting starts, we have a workshop at five, we meet at six.
I could probably be there by six thirty. No?
A lot of times, our agendas are fairly short, six thirty, six forty-five, a long meeting for us is probably seven o'clock.
Is anybody else able to take it?
We'll.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll figure, we'll figure something out. No?
We could, I could ask Joe, uh, Joe, uh, sorry, I could ask Danielle, the board secretary, to film. Film those or go live with them again like we used to, that way you guys could at least be watching.
Well, it's, it's kind of like this one, sometimes hard to hear, I've seen, I mean, you can barely hear what's going on. Well, uh, what about you, Sam, would you, are you, I know you've got a lot of.
One, one more meeting, um, let's, let's look at the schedule and everybody's schedule at once and see who, who it makes most sense.
Put that on the agenda for our next, uh, I just, I just feel like, and it'd be, uh, filling in for, uh, Lamar if he, he may never go to another meeting, I don't know. So anyway, well, let's put that on the agenda and everybody be thinking about it. Because we do need a representative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Very likely, certainly, that is, you know, the school board too, thinking about Lamar and his actions.
Jim, even, you, you might want to think about it. We want to get this worked out so it'd be at somebody's convenience to represent the city.
John, do you think both school boards will take this next step?
Personally, I don't.
Okay. Because I was sort of looking, when I saw this was on here, I sort of looked back at the history of the situation, and it looked to me like the whole thing began just as some sort of offhand remark by one of our first district school board members, however many months ago it started. So I didn't know if the county was really wanting to.
Yeah, well, it had been talked about, like I said, for years, Jim, and I think to my knowledge, back in the eighties, it almost happened, but then they couldn't come together on the price. More recently, I think with just the complexity of buses, you know, having two systems, contract bus contracts, um, you know, we recently, I guess, negotiated our own contract through the city schools, and for years, as long as I've known it, it's been, we just tagged on to the county's bus contract. We weren't comfortable with that contract, and we opted out, they let us out of that contract, and we negotiated our own contract, and now they've jumped on to ours for the high school students. So we're already busing the high school kids anyway. And to me, again, the question's not why, it's why not? I mean, we do everything else, we maintain the ball field, we, you know, pay for everything that's done out there, and, and again, I'm not, I don't mean to come off as negative toward the county, I think they're doing the best that they can with their resources. I just feel like we're kind of low on the totem pole, because we're one of thirteen. The other towns have multiple schools in that district.
Right.
And I think naturally, we just get more power. And it's always been Sweetwater takes care of their own. You know, if there's a need out there, then some business owner or some private citizen steps up. That's just the way it's always been, that doesn't mean that's the way it should be.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Put that on the agenda and everybody be thinking about it. John Cleveland provided a memo in your packet about TMG, uh, it's on the second page, I think. Uh, do we need to go over this or is it self-explanatory? You've already read it, so the update here will be sufficient. Looks like things are working, so, uh, unless there's something to bring up, why, we, we can discuss this as we, maybe even when John is here. Anybody got a question about it? Just pretty well answer all the questions, okay?
It looks like we've done all we can except for that very last line, it says, "New summons will be issued and sent to a private process server to attempt the three remaining defendants." Jim, can you shed light on what that, what that really means?
Well, what John did, you'll see there, he said copies were sent for service by certified mail. You can serve a lawsuit by certified mail. If, there's a timeframe, and I think he said it was, uh, supposed to have been done about two weeks ago to get the green card back, saying, yes, these people have accepted this. So what, and since he doesn't have those, what he can do next is issue new summonses and give them to a private process server who will try to serve Sakura Trust, Anoda Incorporated, and Susan Freed. And once they get them served, then they've all got thirty days to answer this lawsuit. And then from there, if they answer, you've got something to contest going forward to the hearing. If they don't answer, you can move for default instead of date for sale, uh, and move on with it. But that'll be the next thing, is, is getting an actual, instead of mailing these things, there'll be an actual person who will go try to find either an agent for the trust and the corporation or, um, Susan Freed personally to serve them with this tax lawsuit.
So worst case scenario, these three remaining defendants are on the land and can't be found.
Okay, if that private process server returns these, for instance, if, if he goes to serve the Sakura Trust, um, and SL Freed is trustee, and they, somebody there says, well, they, they've left or they now live in Wyoming or, uh, you know, they just evade the process. When he gets that back and says it's an evasion of process, he can ask the court to allow him to publish it by publication in the paper, that would be your next step after that. And then, once that runs and they've had their thirty days to answer, you can proceed on it. So there's a whole process to it.
Are these, uh, board of directors maybe, or people that was on her board? Who, who would be involved rather than her on it?
Well, Sakura, the trust, is actually, is on the deal.
Trust, they would have to serve someone at that office, um.
That would be at a nota, right?
Right, uh, that's the Sakura Preservation Trust. You'll notice the, the three, well, actually, the four entities all have the same address.
Yeah.
So I don't know why they accept one and not the others, but, uh, we'll, we'll see what pans out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that's, they have to try to serve them personally, if the process server returns it, that they can't be found or they're evading the process or whatever, the next he can ask to do it by publication. And then once that runs, they, you have to answer and move on with the call. I just want, I just kind of want, where we're, I'm glad to see that it is filed, it's because, you know, I've had people ask what's going on with this, you know, and we can tell them it's filed and moving forward. And, uh, it's good that John's doing this, John's very meticulous as an attorney, which will be good, kind of like John was explaining about, let's make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's in that process. We need to do it here too, so that if we get to the point of a sale and the sale goes through, then, you know, it'll stand up. Uh, if somebody comes in whining and crying about it, at that point, the judge can say, they did everything they were supposed to, I'm sorry.
Right. I've had several people ask me, I heard TM, TMG sold, uh, they've been cleaning it off up there and all of that. And I said, no, we're just trying to keep it clean, Joanne, you, y'all did that right, that's good. Yeah, it looks, looks good. But anyway, thank you, any more questions, are we okay on all this? Okay, uh, I brought a proposal in, uh, last month about the Rex Ball property and the land he proposed to sell to the city of Sweetwater, fifty-something acres out on New, right off of New Highway sixty-eight. I didn't know it was put in the paper, and he called me and he said, uh, he's even had people come up there to his house wanting to know if they could get the same deal. Uh, he's had a couple of, uh, phone calls on it. Uh, what I would like to propose to the city, uh, either we, we, we need to get on this and let him get on, he gave us this special offer of eight hundred thousand dollars due to the fact that he wanted the city, I think, to have it for the reason why the city will always be here, they'll pay for it. Where if he sold it individually to somebody, you never know what's gonna happen. Uh, they may start building and belly up, but he was a little concerned about that because the other people kind of wanted, I think the terms were in the paper that he proposed to us. I didn't see it, he was telling me about it, and, uh, the terms were even in the paper, is that right, Jessica?
The newspaper watches, the YouTube videos, so pretty much anything we say during the meeting, um, the newspaper picks it up and puts it in the paper.
So anyway, uh, and Sam, I asked you Monday, did you get a chance to go out and?
I, I have not, there.
Okay. Would it be out of question sometime this week that we as a board could get together and look at this property to see what we think we could do with it for the future, something for the future? We can drive over it, we can look at it, would anybody object to, to that?
Is he, um, just, just out of curiosity, is, is he wanting to sell it at that price to these other folks or?
He, he won't sell it to anybody else at that price, no.
Gotcha.
No. Uh, the price he included was he gets to live there and take care of it for five years. Now, he's got, I don't know, he's got a, a. Now, he's got, I don't know, he's got a, a small house on it with a shed and a barn. That's probably worth two hundred thousand dollars. If he was to, you know, sell it. But I just think we need to keep him from maybe missing a sale or somebody else might want it, you know? If we could look it over, see if we can see if this is something for the future for the city of Sweetwater. Fifty-seven, how many acres was it? Fifty-five, fifty-six, four. Um, for the future. And we've talked about, you know, even TMG at one point, uh, we might be interested in it for the future. This would be better than TMG because it's out on New sixty-eight. It's got four ingresses and egresses. It's got water, sewer, gas, um. Phone, you can't hear it, but my phone is ringing. I don't know, y'all noticed my hearing aids, I can hear better. Um, and, and that'd just be something that, you know, he, he's looking for the future. That's why he put it at five years at the price he put it out. And I won't go into a lot of detail, but he's, he's wanting to finance it for five years. And all I'm asking is before we say no to it or anything to drive over it, won't take thirty minutes. We can talk about property all day long. I can tell you about my property up there at Monroe Street, twenty acres, how it is. But until you go up there and see my property, you don't have a clue of what it is.
I'll, I'll go by and look at it before our next, uh, city board meeting on, on the seventh. And then, um, my, my concern, Mayor, my, just is that, that ravine that cuts, cuts through it. Is there some acreage that really isn't that buildable? And when I ask for a topography map, you know, what, what was given here was not, um, no, it, it, it tells the tale, but it doesn't tell the tale of, of how much kind of usable, um, there is. But I'll, I'll go by and I'll, I'll give you just my personal recommendation by, by next, next meeting.
What about the rest of you?
I, I say, I go by every day.
I know, but you've never really driven over it.
I've not driven back yet, but I know where it is.
And, and that's what I'm saying. Could we meet when Sam gets ready to, maybe a time and, and just drive over it, look at it? Uh, see what you think about it? What about, uh, Sam, what would be a good day for you before the next?
I'm looking at my schedule here. I mean, any, any afternoons. Any afternoons except tomorrow, Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Th- Thursday's the first opportunity I, I have, uh, in the evening.
What about next Monday?
Monday's open for me. At six-thirty.
Monday at six-thirty, it is, could, could everybody? Alan, Joanne, Jim?
My, my other concern, just while we're talking about this, is if it's eight hundred thousand or if it's a million, I'm, I'm not clear.
Eight hundred.
That's, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we could put toward TMI, um, is, is my con, my concern. And there's a whole lot more, uh, property at, at TMI than, than this.
But this is better property than TMI. It's rougher than, than this out there. And do you think we can afford TMI at two-point-something million and then have it torn down?
Once again, TMI on, like I say, just my, my personal opinion, I would rather invest in all of TMI than this. But I told you, I'll go look at it, I'll, I'll go by, I'll do my due diligence on, um, I'll get with a surveyor and see if they've got LIDAR that gives me a lot more information than, than what this has. And like I say, uh, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pass judgment without saying.
Right.
Out of that fifty acres, without doing major excavation, you only have X. That, that's, that's my concern.
Okay, Monday at six-thirty?
Yep, I'll meet, I'll meet you up there.
Well, can you make it, Alan? Joanne? Jim?
Yes.
Uh, meet here at City Hall? And we get the trucks?
I'll just meet you out there.
Meet you at the property?
Huh?
Meet you at the property.
Let, we'll just meet at the property.
Jessica, will you send the reminder, please?
Yes, please.
Uh, John, will you be able to take your truck maybe? John has seen the property and, uh, Jessica, we drove, drove over it, so if y'all want to come, John and Jess, you're welcome to do so. Okay.
Does that have to be like, put up there as a meeting we're having to make sure we stay legal?
Do one.
Yes, very good point.
It needs to be announced.
Yeah, have to be announced. Anytime two or three are gathered together.
What could it do, we, we listed as a workshop meeting?
Commissioner Field Trip.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, y'all have toured the downtown building, the last workshop, is there any follow-up for those areas?
Sean, were y'all still entertaining moving out there or what was?
I talked to Lamar today and I brought that up, thinking it, and he said he's fine with it. He has no problem whatsoever with it. Is that what he told you?
Yeah.
We just kind of, I know, I've, I've heard it two or three times, but can you just remind us of the reasoning why that we will have it all?
Well, that's just, that building is big enough where we can put all of our equipment in one building. Instead of having, what was here, what was here, tractors here. It allows us to put everything into one central location. Get free this space up across the street. There's offices there that, you know, City Hall could use and they did it. Everybody says City Hall's too small, we got to prove it. It also frees up some space to where we can take our seasonal decorations and put them in one location. Just right now, we've got Christmas decorations here, there, Halloween over here, Easter is here. So you can, it allows for all that to be put into one spot.
Would, would it be all, all three buildings or just like the main?
The, the original old brick warehouse? Okay.
They're gonna put a bay door on the side.
So what all, what all of that empty as far as where you have equipment stored, you were talking here and there and everywhere, bring it all together?
Basement, pantry, home way, that's all. End up the chicken lodges, about tennis courts. We, uh, it's a lot of the trucks I can run all over everywhere. That's just getting some stuff over here across the street.
Probably help more maintenance too, with the cabin, everything in one spot, being able to. What about the garage, the old garage out there that? I think it's not necessarily a business use proposal, but there needs to be something done to drain water around that thing instead of in it. It looks like in the front, there's a lot of water goes under those doors. Makes it kind of where you can't use it for anything storage-wise or anything like that. I mean, it, I mean, it'd probably be a good little maintenance area for you if it were to where you could go in there without water being standing there.
David, can you cut the front of that off?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a task. But you can tell it's.
Water does come in.
Yeah, a lot of water. Possibly, yeah. Yeah, they're just raising it up and kind of putting a swell type drain around through there to keep it from running in there.
Okay, anything else, Sean?
Oh. Would that leave us, we need to revisit the funding of that purchase?
It's pub, public use?
Well, but I think, him, Taff, whoever was, we consulted, had a concern as to whether anything other than part of a community center would be a, uh,
I want to think it actually said, I need to look back, um, in there, but I do think Parks and Recreation Facilities was mentioned when we said community center. So technically, Parks and Rec facilities might fit into that, but I need to pull that again and just make sure. But I'll double check on that.
Okay. Jessica has several items to review with the board at this time. Jessica?
So I have someone available by Zoom for the HyperReach contract. He wasn't able to come in person tonight, but he's waiting on a link to join us. Before I start that meeting and ask him to come in, I just wanted to kind of tell you what I've done in the meantime. If y'all recall, um, the HyperReach contract was on a per-call basis. And I did include a copy of that contract in your packet, so you all can read through it also. Um, Russell or Russ is, um, with HyperReach. Um, they basically kept us on the same pricing and program as the company that bought out that we were with prior to HyperReach. If he goes and actually looks at the calls we sent out this year through June, I believe, we should have been paying like a excess amount because we went over our allotted ten thousand minutes. Um, he's offered to put us on an unlimited plan, um, I think around fifty-five hundred. And he did say that the price was probably going to go up next year for everyone across the board. So I don't think fifty-five hundred is the end total. Right now, we're paying twenty-five hundred, maybe something in that, twenty-six hundred, something in that range. Um, so you all have asked me to follow back up with him and get some questions, and he just wanted to address you directly. In the meantime, I met with three other companies that do a similar thing. One of them is Code Red, which is who we were with before. HyperReach, we didn't really have any service issues with them, um, and, I mean, several other communities in the area do use them. Um, they are through OnSol, but that is, um, Code Red bought, OnSol bought out Code Red, so that's a parent company on Code Red. Uh, that one there, unlimited plan is eight thousand for three years, which comes out to twenty-nine hundred the first year, then twenty-six hundred, then twenty-six hundred. So, um, kind of similar to what we're paying now. So there is an alternate option that's probably pretty good service for what we're paying now rather than going with the higher amount. Um, I did also check two other companies, Civic Plus and Everbridge. Both of them were closer to the five thousand range. Um, one of them, I think, might have some service issues that, uh, they sell their minutes and blocks also instead of doing an unlimited plan, so I wasn't as interested in that. I would rather get away from the blocks. Because if we need to send the message out, I want to be able to send the message out. I don't want to be sitting there calculating, well, how many? People am I sending this to? And, and then it redials if it doesn't get you the first time, so, I mean, there's almost no way to calculate how many it could be. So if we're gonna stick with one of these programs, I'd rather go to an unlimited plan. So to me, the choice is to move to Code Red or to stay with this group. I told Russ, I felt like part of the problem was he comes in August and tells us, oops, y'all were over for last year, we need to change you. Well, we've already signed a new contract for this year starting in July and budgeted money for what the old cost was. So, um, we'll see if I can get him to answer the Zoom loop, because I told him we're a little bit later than I thought it was gonna be, so. Let's see if we can get Russ on here. Hey, Russ, are you able to hear me? Hey, Russ, are you able to hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I was just typing you an email.
Hmm, um, so we're here with the mayor and board of commissioners, and I've kind of given them a summary about you, what you and I have talked about so far. But go ahead and take it away and give them any information you'd like for them to know.
Um, good afternoon or good evening, everyone. I'll be brief because I, I do have another appointment I gotta run to, and I'm sure you guys have a long agenda. Um, so we, uh, signed an agreement, um, ten years or so ago and brought you guys on board. And it's been pretty smooth all through, but the last couple of years, the, um, per-minute count that we agreed to has been creeping up and there was quite an overage. So instead of sending you a bill for this large overage, which I didn't feel good about and knew that you wouldn't appreciate, I came to a resolution, um, or offered a resolution that we move you to an unlimited plan. Um, the unlimited plan that we do today, I, I think you have in front of you, it's typically, um, fifty-four, fifty. And that includes, uh, access to iPaws, automated weather, basically all the bells and whistles to populations that are, that are smaller, under fifteen or twenty thousand. So, um, that's what I proposed. Um, uh, there's some questions about some previous alerts that we can redress, but I wanted to stop there and see if you had questions or any comments after that.
So Jessica, my, my question, uh, is we're unlimited at fifty-four, fifty. But we've already signed up and paid, what have we paid already?
Uh, I think it was twenty-four or twenty-nine hundred, so it'd be the difference of that. And it would be in lieu of sending you the over-minute charge, which was in excess of ten thousand, maybe even twelve thousand dollars. But I'm, I'm not even throwing that on the table. I'm just saying, um, if we could get the difference, that'd be great, move you to that other plan, and then we can, um, just proceed from there.
And that's fifty-four, fifty per year?
Correct. If we want some gauge points to that, um, it, it's access to using, utilizing iPaws, which is, um, what you have currently, which you can send alerts to anyone within range of your cell towers. It's also offers community enrollment where they can sign up. Also pivots the, uh, the county system. And typically, just the iPaws portion would be three thousand dollars. So I, I just grandfathered in, um, what you were paying ten years ago, and we've never raised the price. We haven't raised our prices in over six years, but over ten for, for you all. And, and I want to work with you, I want to do this as a courtesy because we are doing business with your neighbors in the county. So I'm, I'm open to coming up with something we all can live with. I just didn't want anybody falling out of a chair when I sent a ten thousand dollar bill out of the blue. And that's not how we roll, I think, I think you realize that from doing business with us all these years.
So just out of curiosity, typically in, in other services or professional courtesy or whatever you want to call it, there is a, an additional ad service once you go over. So my question is, why were we not notified when we were over five calls or ten calls? How did we get up to ten thousand dollars being possibly billed to us without being notified?
It, it was missed on our end to be, if you want the straight and honest opinion until it rolled up that, that large. And that's why I'm like, I'm not sending a bill that large.
Okay, well, we, we definitely appreciate you not sending the bill. And what I, what I heard from your own words is, is you, your company missed it. Um, but we, like I say, we've already signed, we've already signed up for, for this year. So I guess the point of discussion is, do we want the additional service for the additional amount? Is that, is that a true assessment?
No, you have, all, all the service I mentioned, you have. I've, I've just been selling it at a, at a discounted rate. No, you have, all, all the service I mentioned, you have. I've, I've just been selling it at a, at a discounted rate, less than half the price for the last ten years. The, the overage that I mentioned and why we didn't alert you, you know, five thousand or fifty thousand over, um, it, it got missed on our end. And then when I was aware of it, I'm like, well, I don't wanna send this. I knew, um, I live in a small community, um, and we've been doing business with you guys for years, and usually your volume's lower. So I said, hey, how about we just move you to the lowest plan that we offer today, which is, um, the unlimited plan? Um, and then you don't have to worry about minutes and overages anymore. That was, that was my proposal. Um, if I followed the contract to the letter, yeah, I could bill you, and, and I'm not doing that.
So, I guess, Jessica, you, you, you are the expert in this. Is the additional cost worth all the unlimited?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say.
I'm asking, I'm asking Jessica.
Sir, we, we said, we sell business accounts to start at four and five.
You're, you're a salesman. I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question to the lady that you uses it.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, yeah. I, I, I apologize. Go ahead.
I do thi- I don't think that the new contract price is way out of line with what other services are offering.
Right, and we've checked that.
And I do think it's a valuable service. I think people appreciate having it. If we continue to have as much problem with the garbage contractor that we're having, we're gonna continue to have to keep sending out those calls. Very rarely do we ever send a call that's only to one street unless, we did that a couple of times for paving, and those are almost nothing. I do think we probably need an unlimited plan, no matter who we choose to go with in the future. Um, I am like Sam, I wish there'd been some kind of notification that said, hey, by the way, you're out of minutes, you know, this, since that had never happened before, and then all of a sudden, the last two years, apparently we've gone over, but, um...
The trend, if you want me to comment to that, Jessica, the trend I've seen is, yeah, two thousand, two, three, four, you're just using it more, more weather alerts and, and, um, more usage. So moving it to that plan makes sense. Um, most of our package prices, you're, we're always gonna be tracking, um, minutes on that. Now, if it's too much of a jump, I'll work with you. I'm, I'm here to, to, um, you know, come to a resolution. I'm just bringing it to the table and trying to be, uh, as professional and, and flexible as I can about it.
What's his name?
Russ.
Hey, Russ, this is the mayor. What would be your bottom line? Let's say that you gave us a price today, and we can cut to the chase, and just, what can you, so that we can keep your service, what would be a bottom line figure, yea or nay, that we would stay with you?
Um, Mayor, um, yeah, the na- the name's, uh, Russ, and I have to keep myself out of a little bit of hot water. The, the, the rub of this is we're supposed to raise our prices across the board in October, which you guys would've been tagged, and, and it would've been a big jump. So I, the figure I had in my mind was to do it at forty-nine, ninety-five. That keeps you under five thousand, keeps you unlimited, gives you iPaws, uh, weather, and, and some features that, that others aren't providing. I don't, I, I'm sure you're not gonna get a better deal unlimited than that out there, and that'll keep me out of hot water on my end.
What, what kinda increase is that for?
Um, about two thousand.
If, if you all would like some timelines, um, when I agreed to sell you that, um, in two thousand and fourteen, I believe, that was to do a, a price match, we were charging, um, forty-nine, ninety-five then, then it increased six years ago or seven years ago to fifty-four, fifty, and it's gonna jump now. We, as you can see, we don't make a habit of raising our prices, um, in heaven historically, but as we all know, the cost of providing goods and services is, is growing up. Our costs grew twenty percent in the last year.
So Russ, just to clarify, you're saying that if we go to forty-nine, ninety-five for the remainder of this contract year, pay the difference between what we've already paid in forty-nine, ninety-five, and that'll take us through the end of contract in June, and then we can renew at that point?
Yeah, I'll just send you a new contract. What I per- what I'd like to do is send you a new contract to sign. It'll be effective in June. That'll kinda lock you at that price so you don't incur any cost. And if there are increases down the road, we can just stay there.
Okay.
Okay, and we didn't advertise this as a called meeting tonight, so they won't actually be voting on it, but, um, if you'll let them, you know, finish this discussion, and then I'll, I'll shoot you an email later this week and kinda tell you where we're going with it, and then either way, we'll have to vote, um, in the October meeting, so it'd be two weeks from today.
Understood, and, uh, if you need anything, you have my cell phone number. That's been the same for twenty-four or twenty-five years. And, uh, and you mentioned the salesman, and yeah, I am the VP of Sales, but I'm, I'm not much of a salesman, and I don't sell anymore, sir. I'm a businessman, and I'm on the town board of my own little town, or at least used to be, so I know the process. So, I'll work with you guys all the way you can, and I wanna keep you as a customer.
All right. Thank you, Russ, and I'll let you know how everything goes. Thanks for, um, staying late with us to call in tonight.
Thank you, Russ.
Got it. Have a wonderful evening, you guys.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
So this other one right here, Jessica, that you have in here, the OnSolve, at eighty-two, ninety-nine, ninety-eight, is that for three years?
That is for three years, so, you know, it's twenty-nine hundred the first year, and then twenty-six, and then twenty, or twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
The difference, if it's pretty, from what I can read there, it's kinda offering the same thing that he just talked about.
Of the three that I talked to, the three alternates to Hyperreach, Code Red is the only other one I'd probably recommend because there's quite, it's probably the biggest service in, you know, like, I would say they probably service more people than just about anyone else.
Because his price is gonna go up again in October, and he just said that, for whenever it goes up again. So by the time the next contract comes around, he's gonna have the price increase.
So, when's the year up, though?
Our contract with him expires in June.
Okay, so.
So, to, I mean, I think what I would feel comfortable doing is agreeing the forty-nine, ninety-five.
Yeah, for the rest of this contract.
Through June, and then in like March, we get new pricing from everyone and say, where can we go with this? And if we wanna make a move, we have those options available.
Okay, let's put it on the agenda. You wanna continue now?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Um, so, utility cuts. Their Buster, years ago, worked out an agreement with the utility board that when we, um, have cuts that are made by the utility board, so they're installing a water line, or they're doing sewer work or something like that, and they have to cut through the asphalt, the street department comes and repairs those cuts, and we don't bill them like every, it used to be years ago, we would bill them every time something like that happened. But basically, they just give us a blanket donation for the year, and every once in a while Buster would go and eke a couple thousand more out of them, you know, to kinda keep up with what price increases were and something. Right now, it's a re- it's twenty thousand a year, and it's been there for a few years now. Um, they probably don't do twenty thousand dollars worth of cuts, although maybe, I mean, that may be changing, but in the, in the past few years, they haven't been doing, like, it's definitely not costing us. This was a little bit of a way of the utility board to kinda give the city a little bit of funding that was legal and above the board in exchange for, you know, some services done. I have always accounted for that in the general fund. Really, what they're doing should probably be coming out of, should be going into State Street Aid, because I'm taking them, when they make a cut and they buy asphalt, that comes out of State Street Aid fund. But when the utility board pays that twenty thousand dollars, it goes into the general fund. So really, I need to be putting that in State Street Aid. So I just wanted to make you all aware that moving forward, I'm, it's budgeted as a revenue for the general fund. I think it's more properly, and it's always been that way. It's more properly, should be going to State Street Aid, 'cause that's where I'm taking the expenditures out to do the repairs. So I wanted to talk to you all about that before I made any change, 'cause it is technically in the budget, so the next time we do a budget amendment, we should probably throw that in there and move it to State Street Aid revenue instead of general fund revenue, 'cause basically, it's costing David's budget to make those utility cuts, but the money that we're getting back from the utility board is going back into general fund, not into State Street Aid. So does that make sense?
Do we need to vote on that?
We can't vote on it tonight, and, and it's not, they don't pay that until May of each year, so we don't even get that revenue till the end of the year. I imagine we'll have a budget amendment sometime between now and then, so I'm just saying, the next time we do a budget amendment, I'll probably add that on there, and that's kinda the reasoning for it. This is very similar to how, when we used to sell gravel, we were taking the expense out of gravel but putting the revenue back in general fund, just because that's the way we always did it. And finally, we looked at it, and we were like, that's not really right. We shouldn't be doing that. We're basically draining State Street Aid for that money and putting the, the funds back into general fund instead. The other thing I wanna talk about, um, I brought the, this is the last two or three months. I just thought y'all might like to flip through it. If you need something to feel proud about or happy about, this is it. Um, this is the depot sign-in sheet for the last few months. Margaret Chester brought it up to here today, um, and I'll, I always give it to Haley and Josh to look through, but Margaret has added a line, what did you like about Sweetwater, and how did you hear about Sweetwater? And sometimes the people have answered those things. It's really cool. In August, we had a couple from New Zealand here. We've had people from Oregon and California and New Jersey, and just come to the visitor center and sign the book. I mean, there's no telling how many people go through that, you know, don't actually sign the book, but it's just neat, and those are some nice comments, if y'all wanna read those. In the same tourism vein, um, you all mostly know, but yesterday and today, we had, um, people, uh, in town filming. They're doing a short film. Um, the Beagle hosted a fundraiser. Our local business owners have paid in twenty-four thousand dollars to make this, um, film happen. Um, some of us sitting at the table included, uh, paid into that. And, uh, what we're asking is to take out of the, that's already there, the, the budget in tourism funds, so paid for by hotel motel tax, um, for promotions, to take six thousand dollars of that money and fund it towards this film, this short film project. It's gonna be sent to film festivals, and it's, it was written for Sweetwater. It's all about Sweetwater. It features Sweetwater businesses. Um, I think it's a pretty cool thing. The mayor sat in on that meeting. Sam was there, Joanne was there, um, so it's pretty neat. Um, but the county is also gonna pledge ten thousand dollars, so the county won't be able to get a check to them this week like as quickly as we could. If you all are okay with it, I'm gonna go ahead, we don't have to do a budget amendment on it. We already have money set aside for promotions, but I would take six thousand out of tourism fund. I'd go ahead and pay them the county's amount and then let the county reimburse us, 'cause their board meeting to vote on it is not till tomorrow night. So, do y'all have any issue with that? Technically, even if the county didn't reimburse us, we have sixty or seventy thousand, seventy thousand dollars now sitting in fund balance for tourism. So it's not like we couldn't cover it, but I, from what I hear from the county, they feel confident that they're gonna actually vote to cover that. I've talked to one commissioner and Blainer, the county mayor, so I think there's a pretty good shot. But, I mean, it's a neat thing. It's something I've always wanted to see happen in Sweetwater, and, um, we get to keep those marketing materials. They'll show the film here in a couple of months, um, here locally, so we can all see it, but, so.
That, that is the thing, we're, we're making a, a payment or an investment on a production that we can use later, so.
And there's, um, information in your packet about what the storyline is and what their timeline is, and the first, um, the first public screenings at the Film Fest in Knoxville, um, in November. So it's a very quick timeline, and the quicker we can get it turned around for them, the better. Um, the other thing, we had a little open house at the museum last Saturday from two to four, and, uh, had about twenty-five people show up, and Virgil Wirick and Larry Anderson and all them filled everybody in on all the, uh, history of the museum. There's a lot of really neat things up there. The, the museum will continue to be open Saturdays and Sundays, two to four through October, and after that, it'll close, and people can still, if you want to bring a group to the museum, you can still call, and, um, we'll make an appointment, and usually we either send Larry or Pidge up there to talk to them and fill them in on everything. I think Johnny Sutton's there on Sundays. He doesn't have a ton of traffic through Sundays, so I was kinda trying to push them towards doing Friday, Saturday instead of Saturday, Sunday, but, um, right now, they've decided to stay with Saturday, Sunday, so, um, Alan has taken over the museum board after Buster's passing, so I think, I think that was a good little kickoff. We had good little attendance. We've got, kinda built that volunteer group up a little bit more again, and I just wanna kinda fill y'all in about that. Um, the green space, I posted new pictures over there. That's the, um, most updated design. There is a six-foot path in the front. Uh, in addition to that path, there'll be a green space area, and there'll be bollards. So between Highway eleven traffic and the actual sidewalk, there will be a set of bollards, there'll be a sidewalk, or a green space, and then the sidewalk. Um, we did end up, after talking about it last week, decide to stick with the six-foot sidewalk, the existing sidewalk that was just poured, it's just gonna be extended a little bit more. Um, a couple other changes, the original drying had fountains, spickets coming in towards the fountain, and we've decided to do fountain and sending them out, just because cost is much cheaper that way. Um, and also, it gives less of an appearance of a splash pad and more of an appearance of this is a fountain. We are still keeping the historic fountain. It's been sent off to be refurbished and spiffied up a little bit. Still trying to find a topper, or maybe have a custom topper built to make it look like more what the original fountain looked like. But the, the, the base part of it is the original fountain, and we're taking good care of it, so. Street department's done an excellent job on that. Um, if we hired out a third party to do that project, we'd be talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, and our guys just know how to do things, and I'm super grateful for that. I don't, you know, they build a train car back. I don't know anybody else that can do that, so. Um, we do have a grant on that from, uh, State Main Street, um, for sixty-five thousand dollars of that project, which would be the majority of it. Um, we also have a little bit of an update for Parks and Rec. Uh, they restripped the third tennis court to add pickleball. So it's now a multi-use court, so they can do pickleball or tennis court on the very middle court. We added two new pickleball courts. Last time, we had it resurfaced last year, so now we're just taking a third tennis court and making it available for pickleball. Our junior main street group's gonna be hosting a pickleball tournament there in October, which they are very excited about. They open sign up Saturday at noon, and they already have half of the slots filled, so they can only have ten more teams, or nine more teams, I think, as of today. So, it's gonna be great. It's gonna bring people in, and, um, the students are the ones putting that on and organizing it, and it's giving them, um, a neat fundraiser, so we're excited about that. Also on Parks and Rec, the Homecoming Bridge. We got a problem. The Homecoming Bridge needs at least some maintenance, and it may need more than that. But we have contacted a contractor, just, uh, John spoke with a contractor a couple times about this, just to see if there's a way to keep the same piers in the ground and fix the bridge. First of all, it's not ADA compliant, 'cause it's this huge arch. Secondly, it's very slick when it's wet. It's very, very slippery. And third, the boards are kind of starting to rot away. So at the very least, Parks and Rec is gonna have to do some maintenance on that bridge if we wanna keep it open. And this is the time of year so many people are walking outside and using it. We have the Halloween Trick or Treat Trail there for, um, Halloween. We've got, you know, different events going on downtown. Small Town Christmas has some stuff down there, not necessarily on the trail, but around the bridge, so, um... Sean, you have anything you wanna add to that? Basically, we definitely need to at least do some maintenance.
Yeah, so, uh, those ladies, Donna Michael this morning, uh, told him that one of the steps coming off on John Sutton's side of the bridge had, her daughter stepped on it, the step actually broke, and she stepped on a nail, and she took her, got a dent in the shot. She, she wasn't mad, you know, she was just letting, letting the stone happen. So I went down there this morning and walked across the bridge, and probably at least half of the boards going across the bridge are loose. And, uh, the biggest problem that I see, I don't think it, it, it's not, I don't think they're gonna break. I think it's more a tripping hazard, the way they, they, they wobble, and it's where the, the carriage bolts that's holding them to the bridge, the holes that just wandered out of the bridge. And it's, it's left, uh, fallen, so I think it's at the very minimum, we need to replace all of those.
So are you saying the bridge is closed right now?
No, it's, no, it's.
I'm gonna ask a, I'm gonna ask a, I'm going to ask a question at the maximum.
Okay.
What kinda backlash would we get if we closed it? And I know I'm, I'm, I'm asking a very public question, but...
You mean like for good or just to do the maintenance? Both.
Depends on what it costs.
Yes.
The, the thing about it is, y'all are gonna hate me, but that, that, there's nothing, there's nothing of, on that bridge that meets code, period. It needs to be fixed appropriately. The way it is right now, it's a liability, and, I mean, everybody's making funny faces, but we've known it for quite some time.
This one right here has failed three times on that bridge.
My mom's falling.
I mean, I'm not saying close it.
I, I am.
I think it should be closed.
I was gonna, I was.
What, what's the alternative?
I mean.
If you close it, I mean.
So.
The only thing, if you're talking about connectivity, they would have to walk up the hill on Old Sixty-eight where there is no shoulder and cross over that traffic bridge where there is no shoulder.
But basically.
I do it a couple of times a year during festivals and hold my breath and hope we don't get hit, but...
But the big thing is, you can't go from the duck park to the, to the track.
Uh-uh.
That's, that's the connectivity, right? I mean, that, that's the major connectivity.
I know it's the road bridge.
Huh?
I was gonna, the road bridge, yeah.
So, once again, I've, I've asked the question, my recommendation would be, we, we close it until we figure out how to do it right. Now, how to do it right leads into more questions. Imagine that with, with me, in that the, the piers that are there, are they still? the, the piers that are there, are they still, they're not concrete piers, they're steel, steel?
They're metal.
And how did we, is there any? I'm asking a question, but I know there are, there's got to be like FEMA flood elevation for that thing to have even been built there. So, there's a set elevation that that bridge can be at or needs to be at when it's repaired. Um.
It's too, it's too arched. That's the problem. It's too arched.
Yeah, it, go ahead.
I have not successfully found any documents about the construction of that bridge to show whether any of those things were checked. Now, we have been told we are not even allowed to make the creek waters muddy, that those are state waters and we cannot, we are not allowed to put anything there unless we take something out. We're not allowed to take something out unless we put something back in. Like, the flow of that has to be exactly what it is now. I do think you're talking about a very complex and long-term project. Nobody needs to think that if we shut this bridge down now, that it's gonna be fixed two years from now. I mean, this, this may be my retirement bridge. We may be having my retirement party on the bridge. It's gonna be a long-term project. By the time you do the engineering on it, you get the permission you need from T-DAC. This is not a quick fix at all, or a cheap fix.
But, what, what is there now is a hazard to the city, period.
Yeah, how many people are gonna go get?
I am shocked insurance has not shut it down.
Tennis shots and hospital runs before we get sued over it.
Well, it needs to be repaired, that's for sure.
But, but even, even being repaired, it, it doesn't meet any kind of code.
Well, it's been there since nineteen, what, seventy-five?
Being there since nineteen seventy-five still doesn't.
But nobody's died on it yet.
Pri- primary word.
Yeah.
Um.
We might've had a accident or two, but look at all the thousand of people that's went over it. That made it.
I'm just trying to protect the city.
If it is repaired, does it not have to be brought up to code when those repairs are done?
I don't know what that line is. I mean, if we were to do a new grant on this, they would certainly make us make it ADA compliant.
Right.
Um, there might be some kind of, you know, caveat for it being historic in some way, but, um, cause at this point it probably is historic. Um, but I don't know that there's a rule about that you can't maintain it in the meantime, um, without bringing it up to code. I, I do thi- here's what I'm saying is if you close that bridge, nobody's gonna be able to use it for a very long time. If there's a way to maintain it in the meantime, that's not ridiculously, and then we maybe look for grant funding or put it in the capital improvement plan or do something like that. Um, the, the engineers that did the bridge that crosses the creek in front of Willow Creek, the, um, just like the metal bridge that goes across there, you know, that might, I don't know if that's an option for that type of bridge. I do know we would for sure have to jump through some hoops with T-DAC and make sure, and FEMA, like you said, it's in the flood zone. So, I definitely, it's not a quick fix, so.
Well, that's the option, put the, the pedestrian walkway next to the road bridge. Walk across there versus.
You talking about?
I'm not sure what the, what that lane width and steam now.
I'm talking about adding numbers outside it.
That'd probably be more expensive to fix.
Yeah, maybe. But, once you jump through all the hoops with it.
I mean, you could probably replace boards on that and just hope nobody dies on it before we can do it right.
Well, that's, that'd be the first option, I'm thinking. Instead of having to build through all the watershed people and all the T-DAC.
I do think now that we've talked about it in a public meeting and we've made it very clear that we are all aware of this liability, we should probably go ahead and shut it down tomorrow morning, first thing. And if we're gonna maintain it, okay, but um, if we can do maintenance on it to get it to where it's not as hazardous, that, you know.
Like I said, at the bare minimum, we need to replace the boards just to tighten them back up to eliminate that, what I might be tripping hazard.
Well, it should've already. Do, do y'all inspect that bridge on a monthly basis like you do with the equipment? Playground equipment?
Probably would hurt the.
Yeah. Maybe need to start doing that if we keep it open.
Who, who would be, who, who would you have to contact to see about the maintenance part of it, see if it's, would you do that and not have to.
The, the what now?
I, I mean, cause it's not a house, but it is a public.
See about, see about if it can be maintained.
It is a public structure, so you would think there'd be some.
That's what I was, uh, uh, it may depend on the extent of maintenance.
Don't they make a skid thing that you could put all the way across it from one side to the other, keep from sliding out? It, it is slick. There's no doubt about that, but.
There are new materials, build materials out there, decking type materials that has some non-skid on them, I mean.
Well, and we have put non-skid on it before.
Contract that I spoke with, local contractor, just to ask him to go down there and lay eyes on it so we would have some idea, you guys would have some idea of what, what's there, what you're dealing with. And it, it is steel structure, it is bolted, it's in, you basically got two steeper portions coming off land, where it's land, and then, and then it's bolted to a separate case that's less curvature or less steep. That's the part that actually causes the creek. So, most of the infund is, you know, from the land up. So, I guess whoever asked the question about the engineering of it and the existing pier, I don't know when it was built, I don't know what engineering was done. But if we were not, not, if we were able to use what's there, use the piers that were there, require a minimum, a minimum, a letter from a structural engineer to come and look at that and assess what's there and say, yes, you could use these existing pylons and, and you can take, unbolt this steel structure and come back with this, that's ADA accessible. You can use, you're not gonna have to disrupt the creek bank and dig out the bank and this and that, use the, the pylons that are there. And that would require a letter saying that they're structurally sound and they can hold this much weight. To me, it'd probably be a lighter structure even than what's currently there. But, something like what's in front of Willow Creek with no slope, that, or even aluminum, if it met code, that's not arched, but it could still give you that accessibility to get across or to take pictures there, whatever. But it would, it would most likely require an engineer to come and assess what's there. Could we use it? Do we have to remove what's there in the creek bank or can we just leave that, remove the steel bridge part and just bring it, bring the new one up to code using the existing pylons? And I question the engineer.
Give me to get.
Yeah.
Give me to get Zach. NBI that did the assessment.
On the.
Okay.
I mean, that sounds like the good next first step.
Sean, will you work on that and see what you come up and report back to?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and the, the, the local contractor that was looking at it, somebody that views all the time. Yeah, he would be one that I'd coordinate with you guys too. Hey, let's reach out to this engineering firm and get some some sort of idea of this stuff and work. Or is it, is it gonna involve T-DAC and permitting on the creek bank and this and that, cause then you get into whole other paperwork.
My first question, and, and Zach could answer this for us, is the, the pier itself that is there, could we go from point A to point B using just that pier? Cause that would be the quickest, fastest
Yeah.
uh, route to take at that elevation and then you do a connector from, from this side. But even then, you, if you put something out there in the floodway, that's when you have to do a calculation of displacement.
Okay.
But, we need to do it right.
How soon do you think, how, how soon do you think somebody could look at it? You think you could get Zach out there to look at it?
I'll, um, I'll call it first thing in the morning.
I mean, I think with us knowing, I don't know what action we can take, but if you've got boards breaking and boards loose and people falling all over it, I think you've gotta at least close it till our next meeting. We get a report from, maybe Zach and see what, what we can do.
How long would it take to replace those boards, Sean? Do, do you have men to do that? I mean, it can't be a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we could do it, then we probably have done it probably less than a week. You know, if you do one board at a time, it's almost that way.
Oh, come on now, I bet you're out a little bit. Come on now, that ain't no.
So, what do we wanna do? Shut it down until it's repaired? Is that what we're asking tonight? Is, is, are we all clear on that?
I mean, if I'm hearing correctly, we've got boards coming up, we got exposed nails that people are stepping on. I, I.
The one that broke was one of the steps coming off the bridge. It's kind of like each end of the bridge, it's not like, it's kind of like a ditch.
At a minimum, I think, I think we close it down until, um, the Parks and Rec department could at least do their own assessment of, of what's, what needs to be replaced, what needs to be covered. And then I'll, I'll get, um, Zach from NBI that did the other structural assessments here in town and see what his schedule is and let you, let you know.
Clear. John, Sean, you good with that? Okay.
I think it's, it, that's the safest route.
Yeah.
That way you can shut it down, you can work on it, you can assess it, and that's, that's what we're doing. Thank you, Sean.
Let's put a zip line over it.
We all clear? Excuse me. On the agenda for October, we have minutes and distributions. We will have the appointment for a tree board on the agenda. We do not have a recommendation from the tree board, so we will continue to postpone that until we find a replacement. We opened bids in our last workshop on the fire hoses through the FEMA grant. We will vote on the bid award in the October meeting. Is there anything else that anybody can come up with on the October agenda? Okay, quick department head reports. John?
Let's see, got a whole lot of going on as far as residential permits. There are a few out there to build a couple of homes in Willow Creek. Got an inspection in the morning for footers, uh, there. Did a couple of pylons inspected last week in Willow Creek, so slowly, um, but, but again, I think I said this in our last meeting, the residential permitting has slowed down significantly. Other than double wides, I mean, we're still permitting double wides like crazy. But, um, residential side has slowed down some. We do have a Zoom meeting coming up with the developers, you know, required about some property, developers and property here, residential. Commercial side of things, uh, went out, inspected the foundation, footings, the pad, um, for sixty-eight acre electric storm site scrubs. They should be pouring concrete this week. Um, the self-storage units off of sixty-eight down behind the old Farm Bureau location that connects the Rex Ball property down there in the bottom off Commerce Street, two acres down there. They've done their excavation work. It looks good. They've got their retention pond in. It looks really good. So, they're, they're doing good prep work there for that side. They'll have some storage units there. I'm guessing pretty quick they have to pour all the concrete. Uh, you know, same, same old, same old with codes and property maintenance, Rob, you know, coming out of this busy season promoting, you know, sending everybody letters to mow their grass and things like that. Um, we've had fewer and fewer animal issues, dog bites, all that sort of thing. I think there was a pretty concerted effort on our part, you know, Rob and John Cleveland and, you know, everybody. You guys too, uh, ordinance-wise to, you know, really kinda tighten up on our animal control. And I think they're paying off because we're seeing fewer and fewer dogs at bars and dog bites. I mean, you're always gonna have some of that, but we don't have near the amount that we did over the last, you know, two years. So, uh, everything's pretty much running smoothly in our department. Just the housing has slowed down, you know, again, but I, again, I said it the last time. I think it's more of an interest rate and inflation thing than the location. People are still wanting to move here and buy here. It's just not everybody can afford to move here, buy here.
Thank you, John. Eddie?
Okay, I had, Commissioner Sutton had asked me to get together some numbers, just kinda let the board know, uh, just kinda, kind of an idea of what, what's going on in our community, uh, not, not, not really a, a crime rate, but just basically the calls for services and stuff. So, I went back the last three and a half months. They don't try to do this quarterly at the board, would, would allow time for it to kinda give you a view. Uh, it's kinda amazing, you know, Tommy Mills had to put a thing on Facebook and it was a, a story, I believe from he and I, we had back in, I think, two thousand and six maybe. And we were standing downtown, we were talking about traffic issues in Sweetwater. And that, that kinda, kinda puts us where I wanna start off with the report today. Uh, in, in that three and a half months time period, uh, the police department, we've had six hundred and seventy traffic stops. We've had a hundred and three vehicle accidents in the city of Sweetwater and we've had fourteen accidents with injuries. And, uh, and, and that's why I just, I don't wanna take a lot of time, but, but I could, I'd like to commend all the departments, commissioners and you mayor and Jessica, on allowing the officers to have the equipment that we have and for partnering up and buying into this. Because when you see the call volume and stuff that we're, that we're answering and responding to, a, a lot of it involves other departments. You know, like when we have a forty-six or wreck with injury, you know, it, it, all the time it involves a fire department. You know, a lot of the times it involves dating the street department. You know, if it's something as simple as bringing, not simple, they do it. I could never carry it out there. It's bringing out sand or quick dry or something like that after an accident, you know, they're there real quick. Uh, but, but those numbers, like the six hundred and seventy traffic stops in a, in, in three months Facebook, cause in two weeks, uh, three months and two weeks. Uh, on, on the other side of it, uh, with, with our economy, the way it is and everything, when, when I pulled this number, I was, I was really relieved and kinda, kinda pleased to find this out. We've had five B and E's. You know, that burglary, or break-ins, five, and that's, that's pretty, that's pretty good, you know, I mean, for this time period. And, uh, if you can flip it down, I've got a whole thing. Uh, another number that, that I, that I kinda thought may be a little bit higher was family disturbances. And, you know, in law enforcement, that's, that's the most dangerous, besides an active shooter, the most dangerous call that, that an officer can go to. We, we've, uh, had seventy-one. And, uh, and, you know, the, that, that don't seem like, that don't, I mean, excuse me. That number to you may, may seem high, but really in our past, you know, I could go back and pull, that, that number's not really that crazy high. You know, because like I said, with the economy and, and more stuff like that and, and a lot of people being at home and stuff like that, you see it. I was expressing to some of, some of the council, council people earlier, you know, we only had eight fireworks called this year. You know, so that, that means that we're doing, we're doing a better as a city, I think, with the Facebook and, uh, and, uh, the, um, social media in general. You know, you know, getting it out there, you know, hey, they can shoot fireworks to eleven, stuff like that. Plus, I think it also contributes a lot to, contributes to the city having a, a good program downtown for people to see fireworks. Hopefully, hopefully they're seeing that. Uh, overdoses, for that period, we had five overdoses, possible overdoses. You know, those numbers are down. We had one rape reported and it, uh, it turned out to, it turned out to not be a rape, it, it turned out on that case. We've had, uh, had one robbery and, and it was solved. Uh, two guys kicked their way in an apartment and, uh, people were there. For robbery to burglary, the difference is the burglary is the people's not there. Robbery is they're going in, getting it while they're there. Uh, we had a, had a shooting. We got a person infested. He was up on Patton Street just a couple of weeks ago. A sexual assault. Uh, we, we've been working it very diligently. Uh, we, uh, it's kinda gonna be a lengthy case because we've gotta get a lot of, uh, electronic, uh, technology and stuff like that surveyed and, uh, taken care of. Uh, the, this thing here, stolen vehicles. If, if you see a number that we've had a lot of stolen vehicles, like we have eleven for that time period, and, and, and that's, that's a pretty good number. But, because of what, what that you, as council and the mayor, what you support, you know, flock system, that enables us to have, have that capability. Uh, you remember one of the stolen vehicles that we got due to our flock system was, uh, the individuals that came up from Alabama and they had shot a guy nine times, uh, five days before we got him stopped. It come off the flock camera, stolen pickle, and we recovered the vehicle. Plus, another vehicle that was not put into flock yet. We got two guns back and all this. This was at the Walmart at that time. Just real quick on this suspicious persons. And, and this is a number that is high and I have discussed it with, with Commissioner. And, uh, we, we're, we're diligent, trying to identify anyone that may be out walking that, uh, that could be considered transit. I'm not saying all these one hundred and three people that we had contact with were. But if we find a person out and they're, and they're out and we try to, try to do a identifying card with them. And what I mean by that is just to find out, you know, like if they're in our parks and it's after hours, we try to find out who they are, stuff like that. And, uh, we, we had a hundred and three people that mentioned that description. Maybe they were, I don't know, maybe they were sleeping behind a business or something like that. And you kinda get where I'm going, I mean, that's a hundred and three. Uh. Arrest. This number's actually gonna be a little bit higher because this just includes the arrests that our officers made. And what I mean by that, we had a hundred and seventy-two arrests. I mean, our guys are staying extremely busy, I mean, for three and a half months, we had a hundred and seventy-two arrests. That, that means that they physically arrested somebody. And we have, we have more than that, let's say we do a traffic stop and it comes back that John Doe has warrants on him out of another jurisdiction. That's not included into this hundred and seventy-two. You know, this is what we actually write out a warrant to and take it accordingly, hundred and seventy-two. I, I think our, I think our guys are being, being very active, um, just, uh, just to touch base. You know, the, these are numbers and they all affect lives. I, I mean, every one of these, I, I, I've always kept up with what our data is, I've always kept up with our numbers. But I also try to, try to keep it in, in vision that, you know, that, that every report you're done, it, it affects a life. And I, I, I just feel blessed to, to serve at the, the community here. I, I think that we've got a, I think we've got, got a fabulous board, you know, the mayor keeps everything, all of our department heads here, guys. With, without you guys, this wouldn't be possible. Because as everybody in this room knows, I mean, I, I've never been under the stress that I've been under this last two months with health issues. I mean, it has just been, I mean, there's been more times I've called this one, you know, I mean, I just, not that you ever second guess yourself, but I mean, I've, I've got a guy that's out terminal with Frank, it was Gary New. You know, they've already told him, hey, no cure, give a timeframe, they did tests and stuff like that, and that just come up quick. You know, I've got Tyler Blankenship, you know, very, very bad reports he's getting, you know, on his cancer, you know. You, you never wanna, wanna say what you think the end's gonna be, but it's, it's difficult, he, he's, he's in the firefight right now. You know, his mom passed away. Uh, I've got Kitty Wilkins that worked part-time for us, but he's not a part-time employee, I wanna add that, you know, he, he's in all of our hearts, cause we all worked with him. You know, the firemen worked with him, you know, a lot, a lot of the people, part-time, worked with Kitty. You know, Kitty's got a large brain mass and they're afraid to even operate on his because of the fact they're afraid that it could affect his spinal, you know, his, his motor skills and stuff like that. And, uh, and I've got some young people. If, if, if the board hears any issues about the police department, please let Commissioner myself know. Uh, we've got, I think we've got some of the greatest young people we can find, and they're having to step up and grow up with. And if the board's got any questions about any numbers, you get with me, I'll make them available to you, I'll let you know. But I wanna be a hundred percent transparent with you and let you know that, that we, we created all these other departments. Uh, one house up here on Monroe Street right now, excuse me, oh, I'm gonna be at Moore's.
Morse.
On War Street, we battled this thing and battled to try and get it closed down. We got Commissioner Stutz to get with Mr. Moser, and they got John Cleveland, and they were able to get the house shut down. And you wouldn't believe how much better that made that community just by getting that one house shut down. We're working on one up here right now on, on Monroe Street, I gotta get them fixed up. And, and they're helping us on the end, and, uh, and I know Mr. Cleveland's doing a lot of paperwork and stuff like that, just, uh. The, the old corny saying, you know, uh, teamwork makes the dream work, man, that's true. I mean, every, everybody that can work together, it's really helped us. But that's pretty much it, I didn't need to take so much time.
Now, you all know who's filling in with the S R O.
Thank you very much. Uh, Gary New, Captain New was our S R O at Broad Street School. He, uh, obviously is no longer able to work. And we have Jalen Smith, which I hired, I hired Jalen from McMinn County. Jalen was a school resource officer at McMinn County, so it was just a good fit for us. A, as you know, uh, our S R Os now are state-funded, if I say anything wrong, you correct. They're state-funded on a grant, so Jessica and I contacted the person that sold that grant and they accepted Jalen into that grant. So, so that's working out, we've got Jalen up there, a, a good jail, you know, Gary's definitely missed, but, but the school and the kids are in good hands with Jalen. And, uh, everything seems to be working out there. Our others are still in the, in the same place as they are, you know, we've got, we've got Jim Bow, which is, Jim Call, which is over on, he's in high school. But I am glad you mentioned that, Commissioner, because, you know, the last two or three weeks, and I know what it is, there was a school shooting. So automatically ours blew up, you know, everybody had these hit lists and, and just for, for the mayor and commissioner, and, and, you know, just, if, if there is a active hit list. You and every department in here well know about that. So if you've not talked to Eddie or Kevin and they've not told you there's a hit list or this, there's not the hit list. You know, it's one that's been manufactured, cause this last one came from Georgia, what he was.
Yes.
Yeah, this Commissioner, when I gave it to him, automatically he recognized where they were at.
Thank you, Eddie. John?
If I could just, oh, I have one thing. Uh, this is something we hope to do quarterly, just so you all know what's going on with the police department and where areas of concern are. And that was at the request and suggestion of a citizen who attends our meetings regularly. And, uh, we appreciate that input and hope it'll be of benefit to everybody going forward. Thank you, Chief.
It's fine short, uh, business as usual, we're getting all the, uh, schools scheduled to start school programs, uh, we start having on October. Uh, other than that, our, our regular business.
David?
Well, I mean, everybody knows what I've been working on too, projects downtown. Got the new parking lot in at, uh, new block, still, uh, trying to figure out what we're gonna do, what we're planning. Still some paving, big enough rug, thin ledge, fixing, um, random projects around town, anything that's time broken, we gotta fix it. That's basically it.
Thank you, David. Sean, you got anything else to add? Tanya, anything to report?
We're staying very busy, um, we do have an open position for a new service librarian, so the deadline, they pick up applications at City Hall, deadline's October first, to get those back in.
All right. Okay, anything else to come for the board? Anything to be put on the agenda for two weeks from tonight? October, what is that, October seventh? I believe so. If nothing else, thank you for being here, it's been a long meeting, but it's. Yeah.
I'm gonna appreciate Eddie, you're doing this job above the board, too. When I, I lived up there, it was trash all the time, college. Eight coaches played down, like, they like, dark, dead. I just appreciate him and his support. And you, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good to hear. I want to compliment the fire department. Billy Walker's wife fell, we had a, a P O W M I A ceremony at the gazebo and after it was over with, what Billy's in a wheelchair and his wife is going up to the Lazy Beagle to eat. And right there at the crossing gate, she fell, tripped over his, uh, wheelchair. And we called an ambulance, but fortunately, uh, Dan and one or another guy come by, they pulled right over there and, uh, started checking her out. Put some, uh, bandage on her till ambulance got there, took about twenty-five, thirty minutes for ambulance to get there. But they saw her and they reacted. And that, that made me feel good. They pulled in there and assisted. So you thank them guys for me, John.
We got, we got a different.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, we are adjourned.
We no longer have an ambulance posted over here.
Yeah, but nobody attended, I don't think. Do we still have, do we have an ambulance and nobody?
We have two, um, one is a twenty-four hour truck, one is a day truck. Alan and I went over to, uh, them, what week before last?
Couple weeks ago.
Alan, I'd like to let you go from there if you'd like.